Test the sound.
Gentlemen, one more minute.
Mr. Bennett, can you confirm that you can hear us?
Hey, okay.
And we can hear you. Thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to call our meeting to order. Would you please join me for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance? Now, the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to report that our board met at 6:10 PM for a executive session regarding a personnel matter. It concluded at 6:58 PM. And before we get started, I'd like to read an opening message. Tonight's meeting has been advertised to be held in person and online using Zoom with login and call-in information posted to our website. Tonight's video and audio is being recorded. For tonight's meeting, Robert's rules will still apply, and the meeting will be run by the chairman, who will be assisted by an employee managing the Zoom site. During the meeting, in order to offer comment, you must be recognized by the chairman. For people utilizing Zoom, you will need to use the chat function to be recognized. Text your name and address and your request to speak. It will then be passed on by staff to the chairman to be recognized. Once recognized by the chairman, unmute your microphone, and after speaking, please mute your microphone. East Hemphill Township's public rules, comment rules, will apply for all public comment. You must be a resident or business owner in the township to speak. You must identify yourself by name and address before speaking and sign in the guest log for meeting purpose minute, for meeting purposes, minute purposes, excuse me. Comment is limited to three minutes and must be about the agenda item being discussed, with the exception of public comment for non-agenda items. No action will be taken on any non-agenda items of a non-emergency nature during the public comment period for non-agenda items. Okay. And without, out of the way, we get to move to our second item on the agenda. Our police bravery awards. And understand our chief is a little under the weather. Okay.
So tonight, we're here to honor and to show our appreciation to multiple officers within our agency that have done a few good things the past couple of months. First, I'd like Officer Christian Torres to step up here.
Lieutenant Brubaker, if you could step closer to the microphone.
Sure.
Or hold it if you'd like. Makes it easier.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Perfect. There we go. On Thursday, November 4th of last year, about 8:40 in the morning, Officer Christian Torres was transporting a dog to the SPCA. While he was traveling through Lancaster City's jurisdiction in the 100 block of Hershey Ave., he heard the distinct popping sounds of gunshots. He saw a woman running into the road, flagging him down. Officer Torres saw a male holding a gun getting into a vehicle. He quickly turned around and responded to the situation. Officer Torres realized that a shooting had just occurred in his presence and that the suspect was getting into a vehicle. Officer Torres, before coming to East Hemphill, worked for Mannheim Township and was very familiar with the area. He was able to effectively call out his location and that shots had been fired. He called for assistance, as well as immediately gave out the tag of the vehicle, the license plate of the vehicle, excuse me, in case the suspect attempted to flee. Officer Torres exited his cruiser and began shouting commands at the suspect who had gotten back out of his car and was standing facing Officer Torres. Officer Torres, at this time, didn't know if the man was armed or not. He ordered the man to the ground and held him there at gunpoint. While Officer Torres was keeping watch of what he believed at the time to be a suspect, off to his right was a male who had been shot multiple times, as well as the man's family, who was yelling to Officer Torres to take care of the man on the ground, as well as to shoot the, shoot the suspect. Officer Torres kept his cool. He kept a safe distance in case the man had a weapon that was on the ground. And he held the man there until Mannheim Township Police arrived to assist him, and they all safely took the man into custody, the suspect in the custody. EMS was summoned and transported the victim to the hospital. The victim had been shot three times in the torso and one time in the head. Without Officer Christian Torres's quick actions, this man very well may have lost his life. Due to the quick actions, the summoning of EMS, their response, the man did not lose his life. And Lancaster City was able to interview the suspect, who, because of Officer Torres's respect towards him and treated him well while he was being held there, as well as the immediate afterwards, the suspect was appreciative of Officer Torres's treatment and therefore gave full statement to Lancaster City Police and was charged with criminal attempted homicide. It is our belief that Officer Torres performed this act in an outstanding manner, saved lives, and helped get a violent criminal off the street. It's my honor to present him with the department. Commendation for bravery. For us today, we also reached out to the Red Rose FOP, who is the local Lancaster FOP, and gave them the facts of this incident. And they are here to also honor Officer Torres's actions, so. We have Chris Herb and Tony from the FOP.
Good evening. Chris Herb, I'm the president of the Fraternal Order of Police, Red Rose Lodge 16. Upon hearing of this, our committee met, our Awards and Recognition Committee met, and it was determined that he was worthy of receiving a citation for valor, along with a medal. And the membership overwhelmingly honestly passed that motion. And so we're here tonight to provide Officer Torres with his medal. I'm not going to read over the citation, because you already heard the facts, so I don't want to do that.
Yes. Be gone.
Thank you to the FOP and to the board for the support on Officer Christian's award, Officer Torres's award. We have a second incident to honor or to recognize tonight. This incident occurred on December 23rd in the wee hours of 4:45 in the morning. We were dispatched to the Red Carpet Inn, 2101 Columbia Avenue, for a naked male acting erratically, throwing items off a second-floor balcony into the parking lot, causing damage to vehicles and property below. Officer Andrew Karnosik was the first on scene. And as he exited his vehicle, a male came down the stairwell and immediately branished a box cutter at Officer Karnosik and approached him in an aggressive manner, making comments such as, "Are you ready?" Officer Karnosik initially drew his service weapon and began giving the man commands, but quickly realized the man was under the influence of something or having some type of a mental health crisis. Karnosik transitioned to his taser and continued to give the man commands while backing up through the parking lot of the Red Carpet Inn to gain himself a little bit of reactionary distance. He continued to talk to the man, telling him to drop the weapon, so on and so forth. The man kept walking aggressively towards Officer Karnosik, making additional comments such as, "Give me your gun. Shoot me." Do you want, do you want to get gutted? All of this while holding on to his box cutter. Officer Karnosik walked through the entire parking lot and onto Columbia Avenue, keeping the man at, at bay, at large, with a reactionary distance, with his taser pointing at him, trying to gain some time until additional officers were able to arrive to provide him some assistance. As Officer Karnosik was forced out onto traffic, onto Columbia Avenue, vehicles stopped as he was standing in the middle of the roadway there. At that point, Officer Karnosik made the decision to tase the male. The male fell to the ground. He then jumped back up, still with the box cutter in his hand, and charged at Officer Karnosik. Officer Karnosik deployed a taser a second time. At this point, the male dropped the box cutter, backed away from Officer Karnosik, but still refused to comply with commands. Officer Karnosik held the male there at gunpoint until additional units arrived. Officer Geisler and Corporal Burkholder from Manor Township. These three coordinated an effort to physically arrest the male once the three of them were there. They were able to do so. They were able to physically restrain the male, take him into custody without any further injury to the suspect or to any of the officers. This instance is absolutely a justified lethal force option. Officer Karnosik and his willingness to put himself in the line of danger, but was able to successfully talk down this male and de-escalate things and hold things at bay, is absolutely remarkable. For these reasons, Officer Karnosik is also being awarded, through the Department Awards Program, a commendation for bravery. This award, we also thought was worthy of letting the FOP know about this one. Obviously, this very well, both of these could have had completely different outcomes if it wasn't for the the skill set that our officers have. Both of these incidents were caught on, one was caught on full-on-a-body camera, which had only been issued for about a month. I can put words and I can articulate tonight what took place, but until you actually see that body cam footage, the words I'm expressing tonight doesn't give credit to the patience and the skill set that Officer Karnosik used to de-escalate that situation. For Officer Torres, that was caught on his MVR in-car video camera system, the actual shooting when we went back and recorded, which is prime evidence for, for Lancaster City. But I'd like to also, once again, call the FOP up here for recognition for Officer Karnosik. Before we wrap up the awards, as far as Officer Karnosik's is, is detailed here, I mentioned two other officers that were largely involved in this situation, which is Officer Geisler, Corporal Burkholder from Man, excuse me, Manor Township. Both of their actions are also worthy of award. So we have, what we've decided to do is, as we know, Officer Karnosik was awarded the bravery. We have a unit citation for both Officer Geisler and for Corporal Burkholder, if they would both like to step forward. Corporal Burkholder arrived on scene and immediately went into, he's, as you know, corporal. He is a rank. He is a supervisor for a neighboring jurisdiction. He immediately went into the role of a supervisor for our department. He checked on guys. He thought of things that guys needed to do. Obviously, Officer Karnosik, at that point, had been involved in a pretty critical incident. Officer Geisler arrived. He was dealing with suspect. We could not be more appreciative of Corporal Burkholder, the teamwork that went in there. He jumped in and immediately took care of things that a supervisor needed to. We didn't have a supervisor that was there at that point, so incredibly appreciative. Officer Geisler's action, when it was decided that they were going to physically restrain the male and take care of things, Officer Geisler brought back some old sports, sports moves and was able to apprehend the suspect physically. And then, at that point, they all detained him, so. Appreciate the opportunity to publicly recognize this good work tonight, so thank you.
Lieutenant Brubaker, we, as the board, would like to thank you and the department. Officer Torres and Officer Karnosik, Corporal Burkholder and Officer Gessler. I think it's important that we highlight these events when they do occur, as you had stated earlier. Certainly could have gone a different way. Nationally, unfortunately, there has been a push of anti-police sentiment. That is not the case here. This board fully supports you guys, and we're grateful for you. Thank you. Thank you. Up next on our agenda, we have the consent agenda. Is there any discussion regarding the consent agenda this evening?
No.
Mr. Bennett? Do you hear a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Mr. LaFever. Is there a second? I'm sorry. Second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? His motion carries four, zero, one.
Who is the abstention?
I was the abstention.
Thank you.
Up next, action items. The first item that we have up is Lime Springs Square, Phases, or Phase Five.
Go ahead, Claudia. Thank you.
Glad to thank McNeese, Wallace, and Norrick. So, two requests that are before you this evening with respect to this, which, again, is one of the lots in Lime Springs Square. 2018 Oak Tree Development received approval of a land development planned to construct a medical office building on the site and has, since that time, requested time extensions periodically to the deadline to record that plan while they looked for an end user. They've found an end user. Penn State Health has purchased the property. They just closed on the purchase of the property last week. So, the first request is one coming from Penn State that you would extend the deadline to record the plan for another year. They need to make some refinements to it, some minor changes and modifications that we feel confident can be done with your township engineer without having to start the process over again. The second request relates to the release of a bond that you're currently holding from Oak Tree. This plan was never recorded, but despite that fact, a bond was posted. So, we believe it's appropriate for that bond to be released at this time. And then, at such time as Penn State moves forward and actually records the plan, we'll post a bond at that point in time. And suffice to say, construction costs have changed since 2018, so I'm sure we'll have to recalculate what that amount will be. So those are the two requests before the board.
Any discussion? Any questions? Any comments from the audience? Any on Zoom? Okay. So is there a motion to release Lime Spring Square, Phase Five, Lot Four, Township File 160805, Site Improvement Bond, and Extend the Plan Recording for One Year until February 17th, 2023?
A move.
Motion by Mr. Russell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second from Mr. Weaver. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Up next, the Stouffer Track, Stony Battery Road, Marietta.
So I don't believe anybody's here to represent them, but what we're asking the board to do is to accept a deed of dedication and adopt Resolution 2022-05, which recognizes that dedication. And this is for the track of land that's along Stony Battery in front of the parcel.
Could potentially, down the road, be used for a road project.
Right.
Is there any discussion? Okay, any questions? Any comment from the audience? Any comment from Zoom? Okay. Do you hear a motion to adopt Resolution 2205, which accepts the deed of dedication of land from Keystone Custom Homes?
So move.
Motion for Mr. Russell, second, for Mr. LaFever. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Up next, the Property Maintenance Code Draft Ordinance. Move to the 2018 PMC Authorization to Advertise.
So, Steve Branville, our building code official, is here. He can answer any questions for you, but essentially, what you have before you is a draft ordinance, which will move the current building property maintenance code to the 2018 version. Steve, we're using which version? We're using 2015 currently.
Any questions?
Under property maintenance, I have a note for paragraph 602.3 about heat. I'm not sure I'm understanding the intent and obligation of a landlord for heat to a LSE. It suggests to me that we're obligating the lessor to provide heat, which I think would be somewhat unusual. If I could have some clarification on that, please.
Yes, this has been a provision that's been in the property maintenance code for the last 20 years or better. As a mandate, for landlords are required to provide heat during the winter months, a source of heat. And we do have, several times during the winter months, where we get tenants calling up, saying, "Our furnace has been broken for three weeks. It's down in the teens. Landlord refuses to do anything." This gives us the enforcement ability to require that landlord to get the heat back on, so that they're taking care of during the winter months. But it's nothing new. It's something that's been in the code for a long time.
It's up to the landlord to set the lease fee to cover the cost of the heat, I guess, or something.
Yeah, that's between landlord tenant and how they work that out, but yes.
Thank you. Excellent.
Any other comments, questions? Any comments from the audience? Any comments from Zoom? Is there a motion to authorize advertising the ordinance with the intent to adopt the 2018 edition of the International Property Maintenance Code?
So move.
Okay. Motion by Mr. LaFever. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bennett. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Zoning Ordinance Amendment. Amendments related to permitted special exception and conditional use in certain zones, adoption consideration.
So the board had a public hearing on this ordinance back in 15th of December, and the board tabled the matter to allow for additional review. They went back to the planning group for discussion, and there were some changes made to the ordinance. The primary changes, which were minimal in nature according The primary changes, which were minimal in nature according to our attorney and did not need to be re-advertized, was on page two. They removed the wording. One car, one vehicle or more.
Correct.
One vehicle or more. That was removed from the draft. And then, again, on page. Eight, there was a provision in there for motor vehicle sales leasing and service, which dealt with required a sixty day provision for vehicles to be moved off the lot. And also a twenty foot setback from side yard, I believe. No? Yes?
Yeah, it was. It was all yards, including.
All yards.
Right away. Yep.
Okay, so that whole section was removed. There was comments that they felt that was too restrictive for business owners and so that was removed as well. So, it's back before you again for adoption consideration.
I have a concern, a comment. Page six, section sixteen, paragraph two seventy dash five point two. A eleven. No accessory dwelling shall operate as a rental unit to non-family members of the principal building occupants. I suggest the word rental be removed from that. In that I read what I believe would be a corollary. That if they don't charge rent, they could let anybody live there. And our intent, I believe, is to have family relationships in these dwellings. So, that's my suggestion on this matter, please.
Hey, could you give me the section number again, please?
It's on page seven, section sixteen. And it's the smallest paragraph on that page, two seventy dash five point two. You have it.
By definition, the use to be classified as the accessory dwelling. By definition on page one, it'll be outlined on there that these units are to be. Designed, built and maintained as a separate and independent dwelling unit for immediate family of the principal building occupants. And then it gives examples of parents, grandparents, children and grandchildren. So, in order to be classified. As the use, you would have to meet the definition of the unit, which limits it to. Individuals that we spoke about that are immediate family of the principal dwelling owner.
I believe my suggestion does align with the paragraph in section one. I just see that there could be a question at some point in the future. As to who's in the rental unit and who's not. This is a, this is an area that may provide some challenges for us in that. An accessory dwelling as a standalone building. Can present. Challenges to the owners of that property after relatives no longer have use for it. It would seem to me. If we could have a restriction that these accessory units must have one full wall. Adjacent to. The original base dwelling on the property. Then, when it is no longer needed, it just becomes a larger residence. For a single family on that lot. I do appreciate that we've gotten a clarification and a restriction to the family. I just think, I feel it could be better.
As a response to that, if I follow that, the current and. Not to be changed definition again. Currently would allow for a detached use and an attached use, so that that component would not be changing. And what you described could, could happen under the current ordinance as well, so. Perhaps there were issues like that. We did try to review with staff and prior cases. Any issues that were brought up and reviewed the zoning hearing board. Cases for those uses and the most common issue was. Making sure that this unit could not be lived in or rented by someone who did not meet that category. So, that was kind of the, every case that we reviewed had those conditions attached to it, so in order to. Implement what was requested to allow it to become a use that would require a permit rather than a hearing. Those conditions were added to the ordinance. But the ability to construct this attached or detached is an existing. Component of the ordinance that was not changed, so just offering that as clarity. I'm not sure that addresses your question. It just offers a little background.
This question, and to be transparent, is very significant to us in that. We had relationships over thirty years with a neighbor who had an accessory barn for an elder person.
Yeah.
And they used it for friends until they went to sell the property, then they advertised it as being additional apartment for use. And it was occupied and it was a problem. And I had to come before this township to get it corrected. That apartment now is used only by children of that family, to my knowledge. I just know that this can become an issue with additional cars parked in the street, its trash collection. It's a lot of factors to consider.
That is correct and I appreciate that point and that again was one of the conditions that came up often. If you look at page number seven, it's two seventy-five point two point eight twelve. There is a condition in there that the applicant or the owner of the property. Will have to get a notarized document signed by the owner that would then go to the county to be recorded. Like a deed would be or anything else along those lines. That'll be. Able to be accessed at a property transfer so that if a person purchasing the property, they would have a difficulty claiming that they didn't know. Because that document is out there. So, again, it's, it's just an avenue to try to address those concerns because they are valid and they do happen. And that was part of our research was that we were noting those things were coming up and this condition. That again is attached was included in those prior cases on every use that was approved. So, we felt then if that's being implemented one hundred percent of the time, it only makes sense to add that as another. A component to this to make sure that the intent of the use is. Continued and not abused as you described.
I do appreciate all the research and effort that's gone into this. I guess I'd like to leave this discussion with the word rental removed for my initial request on this, just as a bit more clarification. That might be helpful in the future.
It sounds like the definition does not allow. Non-family members, so it's kind of redundant to restate it. But it just adds more force to it, I guess.
Correct.
If you take the word rental out, I think, you know, I don't know that rental adds really anything to it. Just not for use of non-family members, period. Be my thought.
I would say it makes a good point. I guess what it comes down to is, is this a big change or is it a small one? Our engineer might be able to answer that.
Sure, I mean, I would think with that change, you're not changing the intent of, of what's in there. It's a wording thing, just to clarify. I mean, we would probably want to check with the attorney on that one, but I think it's, it's a minor change like we just discussed earlier with the. A conditional use and the other changes in that boat. Those were of a nature where it was a wording change. It wasn't a content change or, you know, a drastic rewrite of anything, so I would. Offer that I would believe it would fall into that category.
Okay, well, if it's a small change and it doesn't do. Doesn't make a significant issue in terms of. Advertising. I suggest we make it. Just my opinion.
Anything that has me confused is what we're going to be saying. So, what is five two seventy-five two A now going to say? If we're dropping wrong, because it's not a complete sentence. What are we saying there instead of using the word rental? Because right now we're saying no accessory dwelling unit shall operate as a unit to non-family members of principal building occupants, so what are?
It could be replaced with dwelling unit if.
Something, yeah, something has to be something other than just dropping rental.
And again, I, just to reiterate, this, these two additions at the bottom here were. Wording used from the zoning hearing board cases and again, the, the intent of those conditions was to be. Kind of in a prepared avenue, if you will, where they're trying to prevent the rental of a unit. But again, I see what you're saying as perhaps that's interpreted that it's. If money's not involved, but again, the intent was too limited to only the definition allowable occupants.
So, instead of rental, we would use the word dwelling.
But aren't they allowed to dwell in their own unit?
Or unit of occupancy or something like that.
Perhaps as an occupied unit.
But aren't they themselves and their fam, or any family members allowed to occupy, right?
Yes. Whether there's money exchanged or not.
I think if, and maybe I'm not understanding that either, but if this would read with the. Removal of rental and just replace with dwelling, then again, it would just say that nobody who is of the immediate family could occupy the dwelling unit that. Was approved to be the accessory dwelling unit, if that's what is hoped to be achieved.
I believe that could be good going forward.
If you're changing that section two, you may want to look, also look at twelve, which also mentions rental unit.
Going back to junkyard, I know the word one vehicle has been removed, but I think the meaning is still. If you have one vehicle on your property that isn't running, basically you're a junkyard. So, I'm not sure if that really gets us any better than we were.
Andy, what page are you on?
I'm sorry, it's on page two, under the definitions. We had talked last time about. The definition of a junkyard. So, it had to do with one, any more, one or more vehicles. That aren't running, basically. So, we've removed the word one, but I think the meaning is still such that. If it was a body shopper, a mechanic, that it would still qualify as a junkyard.
So.
So, I'm not sure we're any.
My understanding of this was that we did not want to allow. A. Somebody to come in and operate a junkyard because we didn't have it defined, Zach.
Maybe not wanting them, not wanting to allow it as much as if a person approached the township to create that use. There is no East Hemfield definition, if you will, of that in the ordinance. So, it was identified that it could be obviously a use that could come to town and to have your own definition gives you kind of a. Protection of how that is understood when it would come to the zoning hearing board for that. Process is outlined to allow for a use that's not provided for in East Hemfield. So, the intent of adding this text to the ordinance is out of a protection approach than it is to say that. Neighboring property is now a junkyard because of it. We met as, as the planning group to review the comments and we, there are pieces of the existing ordinance that would be. Let's say as strict or more with timing and things like that that are in there currently. That could be used to address. What's called a junk vehicle on a property. This isn't creating anything new. It's just offering a definition to protect. Adjoining properties, if you will. If a person came in to ask for that use on a property. You have control of what you call a junkyard rather than relying on an applicant or the zoning hearing board to come up with. Something on the spot perhaps or have to approve that in a hearing. You can point to something that you've approved and. Reviewed.
Just wondering if there's a way to carve out an exception for someone that that's their profession is repairing cars that. They may have them, a couple sitting around that they're kind of working on. Like if, I don't know, do mechanics have to be licensed? Could be something, someone who has a mechanic's license could, this would not apply to them maybe?
So.
Or inspection license or.
Mr. Weaver, I would just say that when we went through this as a planning group, they, it was pointed out to us in a couple of different places in the ordinance. It's already listed where they have the ability. To, you know, enforce. This is not what that was intended to do, but there are different areas in the ordinance that call out. You know, kind of what you're talking about already.
And, and a part of what was removed in that other category that we discussed earlier with the limit to amount of time that a car could be on site and. Not be in what's called a state of repair, if you will, and those other. Pieces that were removed, that was a way to address that concern too, is that there are places in East Hemfield where obviously the work on a vehicle is a permitted use. And it goes on and those places aren't considered to be a junkyard by this definition. They still meet the other use criteria, if you will. And I believe the. The enforcement of it would, would be looked at that way. Rather than saying that, you know, there's a car in the back that's been there for a month that hasn't moved. I believe it would be looked at as that's part of that person's business rather than he's not running a junkyard. However, as was discussed now, there is a part in the ordinance, I believe it's, it may be two weeks if I remember correctly as to like. Technically, if there is a vehicle on site and it's inoperable or not properly registered even, I believe the ordinance quotes. Two weeks as the time period in which it would have to be removed, which. Is much. More. Impactful timing than what is proposed with this definition, so. Again, just offering that as a response to how this was drafted.
Sounds like it was considered and that we're covered then. Thanks.
Sure.
Mr. Bennett, did you have any comments?
No, what you pointed out, Scott, is exactly what I remembered in planning and we have this junkyard, I think, covered pretty well. In our ordinance in other areas, so. I'm good.
So, let's go back to, because I don't think we resolved Mr. LaFever's question, so. What's the thoughts? I think we heard from Mr. Bennett, he would be in favor of making the change. To dwelling. Mr. Russell, what are your thoughts? And Mr. Weaver, what are your thoughts?
I suggested that if we drop rental, we had to put something else in there. So, dwelling seems to work.
Yeah, it just, it needs to be patched up.
Yeah, I can support that.
I'm good.
Okay.
Okay.
You're good with that? Okay.
Thank you.
You gotta be kidding. I can't read that. Okay, so, do I hear a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-two dash oh two, which provides amendments to the sections of the zoning ordinance related to permitted. Special exception and conditional uses. With the change to section two seventy point five point two. Point eleven as discussed. Do I hear a motion?
I think it was eleven and twelve, just to be clear. Was that correct? Remove dwelling or?
You do mention rental unit in twelve.
Yes, that would be correct. So, it would be section eleven and twelve as discussed.
So, move.
Motion for Mr. LaFever, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Okay, zoning ordinance amendment, draft text amendment signage authorization to prepare draft ordinance advertising forward to planning commission for review. Mrs. Schweitzer.
So what you had in your packets was a culmination of probably just over a year of work on DMA's part. And the planner to come up with a sign ordinance that basically gave everything an uplift to today's standards. What we're asking you to do is to authorize us to prepare the ordinance, advertise it, and then move it to the planning commissions for review, and then back to you for consideration.
Is there any discussion?
Just from my own knowledge, this doesn't go to Lancaster County?
It does. It does. Both planning commissions.
Thank you.
Any questions from the audience? Any questions from Zoom? So is there a motion to adopt or authorize, excuse me, the preparation of an ordinance amending sections of the zoning ordinance related to signage forward to the planning commission for review and advertise for adoption consideration?
So move.
Motion for Mr. Russell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Weaver. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Up next, special event. Penn Legacy.
In years past, you've had multiple special events from Penn Legacy. This year, we determined that we could combine it all into one so that they're not coming before you multiple times throughout the year. So before you, this evening is a request from Penn Legacy to authorize traffic control for soccer tournaments on the dates that you have listed in front of you. I won't read all of them as well as the potential use for Aheer Park for the Hempfield Fall Classic in November on two weekends, the twelfth and thirteenth, and the nineteenth and twentieth. These events have not changed from the past and there have been no issues with either traffic control or with the event in the park. All stipulations from the past will remain the same as far as notification of residence should they choose to use Aheer. So it would be staff's recommendation that you authorize the use of Aheer Park and also authorize signature on the indemnification agreement for Penn Legacy to utilize traffic control as outlined with the dates listed.
Any discussion?
Fields will be ready by February the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh to play soccer.
It'd be a little cold. Any comments from the audience? Any comments from Zoom? All right. Do I hear a motion to grant the request of Penn Legacy's plan for traffic control as outlined in their application? Authorize signature on the indemnification agreement and allow the use of Aheer Park for the Hempfield Classic tournaments to be held in November?
So move.
November.
I'm sorry, Mr. LaFever.
We're talking more than just November?
So the dates that they requested which are on your agenda.
For twenty twenty-two.
The field use for the park is specific to the November dates.
Oh, okay. Very well.
So we have a motion by Mr. Bennett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Up next, Aheer Park Wetland Creation and Clean Water Grant Submission Authorization to Sign Landowner Letter.
So this was a discussion at last month's meeting to address a concern that was raised to a supervisor regarding some flooding issues on the backs of Park Avenue, I believe it is. We were fortunate enough to have DMA kind of jump right in there. We found a funding source for this. And what you have before you is the sketch plan that Charity Burkhart has put together. She is on Zoom if there's any questions. But essentially creates a wetlands to the eastern edge of the Aheer Park which currently is, was a field and is a meadow area, fairly wet back there. And what's going, Charity, maybe you could explain to them what would occur with this process?
Sure. Um, it, so what we found as far as funding sources on Cindy's behalf and kind of with the directive of what the board was interested in was this particular area is right now, we had proposed about six acres of I guess earth moving total. The portion which is in that light green green stems from the existing culvert crossing and kind of goes south, southeast-ish to the property line. That's, that was an area which we were proposing as being a lower elevation area and the intent there would be that in overflow events, either coming from Swarun, which is directly west of that, or the drainage area which comes into the swale passing under the Amtrak tracks that sort of bisects that wetland created area that overflow events, instead of just immediately passing downstream, would be able to soak in and infiltrate in that lower area. And then additionally, we had proposed as well with sort of Cindy's directive, that the board was interested in a trail system that would go through that, the darker green portion, which we are proposing as being meadow. So if you, you can kind of see in that section view that we have attached in that upper right-hand corner, it, there would basically be a, still a berm separation almost between Swarun and that created wetland area that, like I said, in overflow events, it would pass over into that area and give it a chance to infiltrate. And then the trail would additionally be raised up higher than that. And the meadow area behind it would be higher than the wetland area, but still lower than the trail area. So that area would also be able to accept overflow events as well. So that was sort of the intent. And then just right downstream from there, it's already wetlands anyway. So it was sort of an attempt at continuing that wetland development up through this area and creating a place for the water to go. I mean, because it can go there right now, but it's not really providing any water quality benefit. It's not really providing any means of actual capacity in terms of storage of any of that water. It's just being able to rise and flow with, with the, with the storm events. So that was sort of the intent of, of the whole, the whole project with this. And like Cindy said, we had found the Clean Water Fund, which is in conjunction with the Lancaster Clean Water Partners. They have a large implementation grant that closes in about two weeks. And that allows us the ability to ask for up to five dollars. This particular project we have is not being five hundred thousand dollars, but that we would be able to then go after that money and basically implement it almost immediately.
So Charity, I did have one question. When, when we discussed this at the last meeting, I did ask Scott if it was possible to give us a proposal to connect. It would be, I believe, at the southern connection there where the trail is that it would run straight across at the bottom of.
Yes, into that, into that neighboring, are you talking into the neighboring property or connecting across to our internal trail system at Aheer?
Connecting across to our internal trail system right there to Aheer.
Okay, okay. I didn't, I didn't include that just because that would be an extra GP that I would need to get from DEP to cross that because that is, Swarun is technically a water of the Commonwealth and I would have to, I would have to get a GP approval for that. And that process would be slowed. What we, what we could do as, as part of this grant ask, we could show conceptually and grade out so that the trail could do that at some point and then come back later and get a GP to connect across there.
And again, I just wanted to see what the option would be if we could do that. It may be cost prohibitive.
Yeah. I don't know that it would, I don't say, I wouldn't say it would be cost prohibitive. I just think in with the timeline of the grant, it would be time prohibitive more than anything. Like, I think that would push us an actual GP to cross Swar, I think would take a little bit more time. They recently, the Conservation District just stopped administering all the very basic GPs for like stream crossings, like easy things like that. And those are now going directly to DEP. So I'm a bit concerned about how that may affect the timeline of this, but like I said, we can, we can put in this, in the concept. And then additionally, when we're designing it, we can have it so that we are anticipating at some point a trail crossing without actually crossing the stream at this point.
Okay, great.
There has been discussion, to my understanding, of relocating our township gardens to this area. Can someone point out on this plan where a proposal for gardens would occur?
The issue with the gardens is that we have to have a crossing. To have a crossing, we need the general permit because we're crossing waters of the Commonwealth. So we run into the same issue and it's compounded because you would need a vehicle crossing as opposed to just a pedestrian crossing. So I think the discussions at last meeting were potentially moving the gardens to a different park area.
Okay, I know we talked about distance from parking to a garden location and the lack of feasibility for a bridge for vehicles. But I didn't know if walking across the pedestrian bridge to a location was inconsideration any longer. So we're going to find another place in the park.
In possibly potentially a different parkland of the township, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Charity, a question for you. Would this generate any MS four credits?
It could. I haven't calculated those yet just because I know how far and above and beyond the township already is. There the Clean Water Part, there's no stipulation on the funding that says that this particular funding can't be used for MS four crediting. So it definitely can. Again, I just didn't calculate the reduction for it. But like I said, if we get it and we can take credit for it and depending on how much in the next permit cycle, DEP will allow overage in terms of credit, we like, I, it's basically, we're just keeping a tab right now of how far in the black we are with our, with our MS four credits at this point. So there's no stipulation on the funding that says that we can't credit these for our MS four program.
It definitely seems like it will generate some credits because of the detention and storage that we're talking about proposing here. So.
For sure.
I just had a question about the cost estimate. Is the purpose of that just to get the grant? And does that?
Yes.
Commit us to anything? I just kind of, it looks like an awful lot of money to soil removal and hauling for a hundred thousand dollars. Twenty-five dollars a cubic yard just seemed like a lot of money. But if it's, it's nothing that we're really committing ourselves to, then not a big deal.
Yeah, but when we do the cost estimate for things like this, it ends up that we are estimating worst case scenario in terms of us actually having to truck the soil offsite. So if there's obviously like with a more detailed like cut fill and, and moving it around on site, that's ideal. But when we do the cost estimate for the grant purposes, we do like worst case scenario with, with what we can, what we can do for that. It's for the grant and ask, for this particular grant ask, there isn't a required match from the municipality. So anything that we match either in kind or dollar wise just makes our application more attractive. So I mean, at this point, I cost, I did a, like the cost estimate, just like, okay, how much would it cost to realistically put it in the ground? And then also taking into consideration that construction and artwork costs are just kind of all over the place right now. So what we had done with our baseline cost estimate is just put in that worst case scenario model. So like I said, it's, it's stuff that, that we're intending on having covered by the grant.
That makes sense.
This was a topic of discussion also during our admin finance meeting later this afternoon. And we talked about in-kind services for the trail work for our public works department. That could get rid of some of that forty-eight thousand that's listed for that. And then also in-kind or cash contribution of fifty thousand, which I believe Scott had calculated just shy of twenty-five percent.
All right. It looked like it was about a twenty-five percent match.
Yeah.
This is, we've, we've tried to tie MS four and stormwater flooding projects together. So this checks both both blocks at this point and we control the land. So that makes it a lot easier in dealing with other, other property owners. So it seems like a, a good win-win type situation and it's addressing some of the the concerns that were raised this fall. And very well documented.
I believe Mr. Bennett had a comment.
Yeah. I am certainly in favor of this. I understand we're under some time pressure here to, to move this along and, you know, again, I'm in favor of it. But I do have a couple of questions. The track of land on, on the map that we're looking at, how big an area is that? Acres?
It's, right now, what we're, Tom, what we're intending on, like what's in the green right now is about six and a half.
Six and a half acres. Okay, thank you. The stormwater facility that you're talking about producing here. Have we ever had a water event significant enough to fill this up? You know, it, on some, some level, I see all this space over there and does it need to be that large? I'm sure you calculated that, right?
It's, right now, this is just straight conceptual design. It is just green on paper. We have not done any actual like stormwater analysis just to be able to like calculate what size it should be. Like I said, we put it on here. I had taken our original survey of Aheer Park and just kind of like conceptually put on top of where like the lower areas were in here. But there's definitely like, it started out smaller, I think in the initial concept, but it was one of those things where as we realized, okay, well, maybe we want to put a trail in here. And then additionally, there was no reason, really no reason if we're asking for grant funding, why you couldn't expand that meadow area that, which is that darker green kind of up into the far reaches of, of this piece of land. So if it wants to be smaller, it can be, but it's, like I said, I, we kind of just maxed it out in order to, in order for, for the grant purposes. Like it's, you know, we have the land. Otherwise, it was just going to be just sitting there.
Well, it's also landed, we could consider doing other things with also. And that's, that's the only point I'm making.
That's true. Yeah.
I think it's, I think it's a good plan. And then I guess my final question, this is an education for me. Is there a limit to the amount of MS credits that you can store?
Um, they've not, DP hasn't indicated what that limit is. They've just said like very blanketly, you can credit, you can credit to the next cycle. And so I've, like me personally, I've been saying to, to folks in municipal, like in the municipalities, I'm, I'm just me, I'm hesitant to credit, like to keep crediting more because I'm worried that we will not get credit for that or that it will somehow misalign with what the next permit cycle is requiring. But again, without knowing what the, the actual credit requirements and rollover is for the next cycle, I can't speak to that. But they've not said that there's, at this point, they've not said that there's a cap or a limit. Um, but they've not said that there's, at this point, they've not said that there's a cap or a limit or anything like that. Um, and to be frank, East Hemfield is the only municipality that I work with right now. That's at a point where we have so much, like, banked and stored. Um, a, a lot of other municipalities are at the position where they are struggling to meet the very basic requirement. So, um, I obviously, like, we're keeping tabs on, on what we have as far as credits and however we can, we can credit them into the next cycle, like, we surely will.
Well, you know, uh, we all appreciate the work that you have done, DM, you and DMA have done along with Mr. Russell in, in promoting these, uh, projects that do provide the MS four credits that, that we do have. It, it is important, uh, for the community and, uh, you know, we're, we're certainly appreciative of this. And, and as I said, this is certainly a project that I would support. Thank you.
It really seems, I, I was gonna say, it really seemed like a slam dunk just because, I mean, it matches the funding source and it's also solving, I like to try and solve other problems besides MS four problems. And this does, like, solve other problems beside MS four problems. So it, it just seems, it seemed like a good fit.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I like, it is a good, um, plan. I like it. Just one question, is the wetlands will become regulated, I'm, I'm assuming? And then they would have to always be wetlands? But the meadow could possibly be used in the future for something else? Is that correct?
It, it could. It could, um, that, that, like I said, the intent is over time to have that wetland area become sort of absolved into that already regulated, um, that already regulated wetland area just down, just down the property line from here. It'd be one of those things, as it, as time moves forward, it would, you would see that it would establish as such. And then there would be obviously like a clear demarcation of where that wetland would be. If we would have to, and it's something that can happen in design development. We would have to specifically design that meadow area to also not establish or start to develop any of those hydrologic markers for becoming a wetland. That would be something that we would have to, the elevation that we would put that meadow area would be specific to not having that happen. It would be more of a, um, an ornamental meadow that wasn't necessarily holding wet plants. Like, it would be an opportunity for water to go there in certain circumstances, but that it wouldn't sit there and establish that wetland vegetation and, um, and those wetland plants. Because that, that's something that feasibly could happen over time is if water, if that was at the wrong elevation, water could sit there in the same way that it would in that created wetland area. And then, you know, to have somebody come out and do a study and then all of a sudden it's a wetland, then yes, you would not be able to do something with it. So, um, the design development, if we're in a position where we want that to be strictly an ornamental meadow, that can be designed as such.
Yeah, I'd almost, I would almost suggest that we do that because at some point in the future, we might get the GP permit for a vehicle crossing and we might want to do something with that meadow area, but that way we wouldn't be locked into it as a wetland for all future time.
And that's something that we can, uh, like I said, in design, you can definitely make sure that that elevation is set as such so that it's, you know, if it gets wet, great, it's an area for infiltration. But if it ends up that, you know, we want it to be something different, that it's not staying wet and having that, that wetland vegetation established.
That would be my suggestion.
I think my, my thing just to point out is you could see the lower left-hand corner of soccer field. And realistically, it, it seems like a big area, but this really is not a big area when you really look at it. Uh, you can get one soccer field realistically in that whole area before we did this project. And after the project, uh, it's actually really limited to what we could do with the meadow area going forward. There's definitely something to say, be said to have just a passive area with nice trees and a, a trail and, you know, nice walking area. Kind of like what we have in Old Dorit, uh, kind of create that little section there. But kind of getting into the point where it's not too much we can really do on, on that side. And given the fact that there's a stream crossing, it kind of limits what we're going to do. Uh, but I'm just, I'm not saying that no to anything, but I'm just saying, just my sense of perspective, just to make you feel a little bit better about what we're talking about tonight. You can see, like I said, the outlines of a soccer field. And you can quickly kind of transpose it onto this side and kind of get a feel for what we're really talking about in terms of usable space. Um, so.
Yeah, it would just give us a little flexibility.
Yeah, I like the flexibility option. No, I would agree.
The other thing that I'd mention is, uh, I know that the planning, we got a good look at this, uh, at our last planning meeting. Um, if necessary, I think it would be a good idea for, uh, DMA to present this to the park and recreation uh, group that we have as well as the, uh, stormwater management group, um, if, if, if they feel they need to see.
Mr. Madonna, would you see access points here to maintain that meadow area with mowing equipment?
Uh, we, we would have to design, um, in the, what looks like the north, um, west corner there where we currently have a bridge wide enough to get over there. Um, that, that, that top piece there, we would have to at least make the trail with, you know, wide enough that we could get a, a mower over there of some size, depending on, on, uh, what we do with that. But that, that whole light green area is kind of already a marshy area. There's, there's not a whole lot that, that we do there. Um, but yeah, we would have to, you would have to main, maintain some sort of trail wide enough to get at least a mower. I, I think like, you know, the six-foot walking trail that we currently have would be enough to get a, a larger mower over there.
I just brought up another question, not to get into the weeds, but do we know the condition of that bridge? We're talking about bringing construction equipment across it.
Uh, not so good. We've, uh, we've looked at that and, uh, we've had, um, discussions with DMA about that, you know, replacing that one. Uh, we didn't think that would be as much of a problem as opposed to creating a new one down, you know, towards the southern end where we're going to do the gardens years ago. But, um, we currently take our construction equipment over there, our loaders and, and our large dump trucks and, uh, trash trucks back across there to dump, you know, the Christmas trees off during the, you know, the Christmas tree recycling. So I mean, it's, it's, it's not great, but it can handle construction traffic.
So are you loaded tracks or hauling off the top so we can handle that then?
Yeah, we, like I said, we currently, you know, fully loaded dump trucks, uh, go across there. We, we haul, uh, the mulch out of there. That is our mulch pile there that looks kind of brownish at the top there. Uh, we mulch our Christmas trees and, and any of our other woody waste there during the year. And then we use that mulch in the park, um, you know, under the, uh, the, the various trees and such.
I think we might have some public interest on this.
Any other comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Yes, sir.
Uh, my understanding of this plan.
Your name?
Tim Sullivan, uh, resident right down there on Park Place. Uh, I've lived down there for the last twenty-seven years now. My understanding of this plan is it will certainly alleviate, um, the condition we have in our backyards in the most extreme, uh, conditions, okay? However, in the general, uh, you know, seasonal rains that we get, okay? In the last twenty-seven years, the condition has gotten worse and worse in that the backyards have become soggy and soggy because in that entire retention basin, there's a creek goes down through, let's say, the middle of it. It's about sixty, forty, north and south. And all of the wetlands on the north end, uh, used to be mowed once a year when the developer was, uh, developing the, the, uh, the development, okay? Uh, when he got his escrow, that stopped, okay? Uh, so that hasn't been mowed in probably twenty-plus years now. Uh, and the, the biomass on the north side of the creek has continued to rise so that the lawns on the south side where the residents live is lower than the biomass on the north side. So every time we get significant rain events, okay? The, the water builds up on the, the lawn side, okay? And it's become such an issue now that if you go back down there and you've seen the pictures, uh, it's hard for the, uh, residents to maintain their lawns back there. So it's basically a swamp. Um, it, you can't run a, uh, a tractor around there, uh, for much of the summer. It's just too wet. If you do, you sink the tractor up to the axles, you have to pull the tractors out. And I asked the board, in conjunction with this project, is there anything that can be done, okay? To alleviate the condition the residents are having down there, okay? Uh, you know, uh, you've got the engineers involved. They've thought about this. Could something be done to raise the elevation slightly, you know, in the retention basin on the south side of the creek? Okay, can something be done to lower the biomass on the north side? Could you have a controlled burn or something like that to get that stuff down? Uh, so that the water starts to flow back on the north side of the retention basin where it should be, okay? And that's, that's my request, okay? Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Uh, Darryl Mealy, uh, 113 Pennington Drive. A couple doors now from Tim. Uh, I won't, uh, elaborate on what he's just said. I would only add that, uh, the water problem has developed over, I'll say, the last eight, ten years. It's due, in my humble opinion, partly to the development that was, was built. We didn't have that problem prior to the buildings being built in the stormwater that's now coming into the pond. Um, I would like to see if someone could look at how that is channeled out into that pond and is there a way to help divert that water to get it further downstream versus just dumping into the property? Um, I think that should also be looked at as a potential issue. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, Maureen Morale. I'm on Pennington also, near everyone else. I think part of the problem, like Mr. Mealy had said, is the water is coming from those buildings that have been built in the last eight to ten years and it's funneling right into our lawns. They have retaining walls put up. They're not getting any water. All the water is funneling right into our yards. So if there's something we can work together, if this goes through, all this dirt you're talking about, isn't there a way that can be used? Take it right down the street, some kind of buildup in that area. I mean, we're willing to work with people, but it's just, this is just ruining our yards. We've, we have hip waders that we now have to even get back there and try. We've gone through lawn equipment like crazy, trying to maintain it. But we've had wildlife coming into our yards now because the grass is so high, but we can't mow it because it's standing water. We have drainage ditches that were designed to move the water and it's now standing water. So this is only since those buildings have been there. Before that, no problems and I've been there twenty years. So that is just my feedback. So if we could work together, that'd be great.
So we have two engineers sitting up here. Is, is this?
All right, I think the, the first thing we do is we, we've got, the me items, we've got to apply for the grant. The grant gets us a lot of flexibility to work with. Um, scopes of work can be adjusted once we get the grant. Um, and, you know, we can, we can work with the scope. We do the analysis. I, I'd be curious to see how much this actually reduces. This is, is upstream, but how much water is it going to actually reduce? What, because you will analyze the different design storms and yet that's not the, just the full normal rain event. But you analyze that stuff and then I still would like to have a look. And I know that our engineer reports to me because I had brought this up in the fall that we had actually gone and checked compliance for a couple, uh, things among those properties that were just mentioned. Uh, but I, I think we, it'd be good to take it as a total look. But we, I think we gotta get moving on the grant first. That's due in two weeks. I think that's a, that's a first step right now. By just taking into consideration what we've heard and, and, uh, looking at that, the big picture is reduce downstream flow. And to just address the, uh, the concerns and the pictures that were presented to the township that were documenting the problem.
Yeah, I hadn't seen these pictures and I wasn't really aware that there was the flooding problem. Are you, do you back up right on SWAR run? Okay, but I was looking on the north side of two eighty-three, that's all agriculture. So I thought maybe something large was built up upstream, but it really isn't. It hasn't changed up there. But the other thing is we've had some really wet years and the groundwater levels have, have risen about a foot over the last five or six years. So it could be a couple of things going on, but I, I agree that this project will certainly help make things better. So, but it, it's definitely something that needs to be looked at, it, it sounds like.
Mayor Steph has heard your concerns. Um, and like I said, the first step is to apply for the grant money. It's not, this, this actually is an expensive project, so we gotta get some monies and at this point. And we can have a continued discussion. There's also, there's probably gonna need to be some forms of agreements with property owners to do work to. Uh, so there's a lot, there's a lot, devil's in the details is the saying goes. Um, but this is just the first step. We were listening to the concerns you guys raised. And, um, this presented itself as an opportunity for us to kind of address it. And the township property is obviously something we control. So that's one where we, we can make a lot of changes too and we're not, uh, it's just something that it's, 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 that's the low hanging fruit per se to kind of address the stormwater. The other stuff is gonna be a little bit more difficult.
Excuse me, this is Darryl again. Uh, one thing to also think about is, uh, with, with these buildings that were built across the, the basin, there's another empty lot that hasn't been built yet. I would, I would like to at least request some, some additional analysis being done before we just grant another building permit for another building to go back there to add more water into this basin. Because, um, I'm not sure if the stormwater management of what's been approved on those buildings is what the intent was before and has that really been looked at? It would be nice to have an engineer look at that stormwater management plan of what they've got built and how that water is channeled and does that really meet the intent of the design?
That's a fair point.
Any other comments? Any comments online? So in hearing what you said, so we have, the first item to take up is authorization of the grant. And then the second item is a more comprehensive study of the region, including the neighbors and the development. And will that be headed up by our engineer or will that be headed up by staff? And what's the action on that?
I think you would direct that to staff and they would consult our engineer. Uh, so that'd be what I would kind of look at. As our manager is avoiding eye contact right now.
I'm sorry, I was, I was.
So Mrs. Schweitzer, did you, are you okay with that?
Absolutely.
Initiating the contact, um, with David Miller and
Absolutely.
Making sure that that gets incorporated into this, this long-term goal.
Is a long-term goal, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Seems like it'd be looking up what the plan called for out there and whether, I don't know if, has it been inspected recently? Sounds like there's a detention basin out there that maybe due for a, a check.
I think it was recently inspected because of the problem. Um, but that doesn't mean it's functioning way it should now, so.
There's a couple of things that could be happening. We can inspect it per plan and it could actually be built per plan and still operating per plan. But stormwater is both a science and an art. Um, and there could be a lot of things where you have something that's bypassing the collection that would not have been caught during design or construction, so. Um, so I think maybe a little bit more comprehensive look than just whether they, they build it per plan.
Yeah, I was just looking at the, the, the prints for here and, and you really have to blow that out to understand where your concern is. But you're right, it's downstream. So, but, so what we do here will help, but it's a two-part process.
Okay. So step one will be, uh, approving, um, the signature for the grant. So do I hear a motion to authorize signature on the landowner's letter and submit the clean water grant?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Russell is their second. Second, second by Mr. Weaver. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. And then the second part of this is staff, um, and our engineer are also gonna take a comprehensive look at the whole area. So hopefully to address your concerns, um, and, uh, we'll end up getting back to you. So thank you. Appreciate you coming here tonight.
For those present, I, I do have an email. I don't know if you're all on that email. If not, if you could just sign in, then I can make sure you're on the list.
And we do listen.
I don't know if the board remembers, but Mr. Sullivan, Sullivan was responsible for construction of the police department, or his company at least.
Oh, well, thank you.
Doesn't matter, still standing.
So we get to call, right?
Yeah, how'd it go blonde?
Darryl? Are you still going to Baltimore? Are you really? How long? How much longer?
Uh, a few more years yet.
Oh, really? Okay. It's like a reunion here tonight. Oh, yeah. Not all bad either.
So up next, we have our, uh, board goals for 2022. In our packet that everyone get a chance to review those.
So I received comments from Andy and Tom, I believe, yes. And I added mine and I gave it to you late today, but it's also, it was part of your agenda packet.
But what we have right now in the agenda packet is the, the current with the revisions at this point, the comments.
Correct, with three, three sets of comments.
So.
Could you just point out the ones that changed? That'd probably be the easiest, because I did read through it originally.
I was actually gonna ask if we could possibly take this up at the next meeting. It's still like a little more time to look at it.
Guys, just be helpful to know what, if you can maybe put on there, like the, the, the changes to the document would be helpful. Um, whether it's a track change or whatever it might be, so that's.
That's already there.
I can't, what we see, we can't see that here.
Really?
Nah.
Well.
I can't on mine at least. Like, um, mine unfortunately is, is being used through explore.
Hey Scott.
Yes.
I, I would support what you're probably gonna s- suggest or hopefully suggest. I also think it'd be a good idea for each of the, um, members of the committee in which they serve to review the, to review the comments and make sure that they're in agreement with them. Um, and then we formalize something and perhaps act on it at the next meeting.
Yeah, I would agree. So each committee that we're on, we're responsible to review these items and make sure we're in good, uh, agreement with them.
I will resend this with those notations noted.
Yeah, just be helpful because when we, when we, when we do it to the Google Docs and we're kind of more limited, like I'm not opening up in Word right now. It's kinda, you know, we don't have all the fancy little bells and whistles, so.
Mine, but mine opened up and was fine.
Yours isn't. For whatever reason, mine's opening up in Google Docs right now, unfortunately on this computer, so it's probably just.
So yeah, I'll get it to you in an email. You should be able to see it.
I thought the one you sent last, I did kind of see something when I opened it at home that there was some track changes on. You say.
Yeah, I did have track changes on it.
I did remember that, but what I brought was the PDF you sent earlier and that doesn't.
And each of the changes have initials behind them of who made the change. So I'll get that out to you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, old business?
I just have one little piece of old business, going back to our reorganization meeting back in, uh, the early January, we had, um, we decided to sort of table our fee schedule at that time, and I don't ever think we brought it back for renewal. And I just bring it up just to for reference and to get it back on the agenda and for review and approval.
So Mr. Bennett, we just actually reviewed that at the admin and finance, uh, committee and, and made some suggestions. Um, so I, I would expect at the next meeting or the meeting after, it'll be before us.
Okay, step ahead of me at every move, Scott. That's great.
All right, any new business? Okay, public comment?
Reward the public, have you get it?
Anybody online?
No, we did just have one resident from the neighborhood that had added, uh, requested to be added to the list as well, and that information has been forwarded to us.
Great. Manager's report.
So starting with Centerville Road South, uh, I had made you aware of a right-of-way issue, funding issue allotment that we had a concern with. I did get resolution to that. They are doing reprogramming it and we should get our reimbursement shortly. Um, Old Roarstown Road Bridge, there unfortunately is a new let date on that one. It is now April 28th.
Back for real quick for Centerville Road, are, how are we gonna announce that to the residents? So that's gonna be a major traffic disruption.
On Centerville Road?
Yeah, like a start. So I just think it would be a way we can kind of give people heads up of weeks in advance of the construction starting so they can start planning.
We haven't even, I mean, I'm sure that the contractor will have that as part of his bid project. We don't even have a schedule yet.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just putting it on the radar screen for, to start, start thinking about how we're gonna. I mean, we did a pretty decent job with State Road and PennDOT did a pretty decent job, but I think Centerville Road's gonna take it up to a whole nother level, um, with, with disruption compared to what we have for State Road.
And there will be disruption. My understanding is that it won't ever be closed except for maybe one or two weekends when they work on the railroad crossing.
It's just gonna be a bugger because we're going, you're going off. You're, you're basically doing partial reconstruction of the bridge with a new bridge to maintain traffic and that's a, that's a bugger.
Yeah.
For traffic, so.
We should also make sure the school district, I guess, is up to speed on everything.
Yes.
As well for that.
Mrs. Schweitzer, uh, Turk Street paving was let?
It was not.
Pardon?
It was not.
Oh, okay.
I gotta find out. They don't necessarily give me updates. I just kind of happen to find out these things.
Yeah.
I will check on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, Farmingdale Road, uh, we met with one more property owner. We're still working through the uh, easements rights away that we need for the Orville and Good interchange. Uh, Chris feels that that's gonna be mid-bid probably in March and then construction shortly thereafter. He's thinking of a summer, fall kind of construction at this point.
So how many more right-of-ways do we need?
At Orville, we have all the ones at Marietta and Good. We need, um, three at Orville and Good.
Yeah.
Um, there are, uh, traffic signal reasons. One's a highway use. We met with the Millers. Uh, we met with, uh, the people on the southeast corner. Um, I've not heard from the other people on the north, south, northwest corner. And we already have right-of-way on the other corner, so.
So we're into February and we think in March we're gonna be bidding it?
That's what he tells me.
Can we get that in writing in an email?
I don't think I'm gonna be able to get that.
Let him know the board's pushing on this. Okay.
So the Stony Battery Road Trail Project, I do have a meeting scheduled with all of the business owners in that area as well as the property owner that's there, the, the private owner on February the 24th to discuss the concept and coordination of how that's gonna get accomplished. I've also invited West Hemfield as well, so. Derry Road, nothing to report there. We're still working through the grant process. Same with the Aheer Park, the DCNR grant. Waiting, uh, for the grant documents to show up so we can review them and get them signed. The ARPA funds, if you're not aware, there is a new ruling out. Um, we now have a blanket exemption up to 10 million, which covers our 2.6. Which essentially means that some of the strings that were attached to that money are no longer there. And we can now claim the full 2.6 as lost revenue. Which then frees that money up to be used as the township wishes.
So should we have a little discussion on that now or save that for another time?
I think we need to get the fire pumper part answered. I think we need to do that next step with public safety and, and admin finance with the fire budgets.
Okay.
The SRBC consumption mitigation grant has been submitted to SRBC, so we're good there. We also received a recycling performance grant of $63,743. Good for us. That's typically what we get every year. It, it's not significantly higher or lower. I also wanted to make you aware of, uh, two grant awards that aren't ours, but they do affect our borders. That's the Little Conestoga Creek Blue Green Corridor. I had mentioned that. That's been officially announced. It's 2.246 million for that project. And then the Little Conestoga Watershed Alliance, which is at the Jackson and River Drive Flop Plane Restoration at 113,000. That was a presentation done by Mark Huber, um, probably April or May that they submitted this grant, uh, was initiated by a property owner in Lake City Township, if you recall. And she felt that something should be done and they got behind her and they actually got an award. So you'll be seeing paperwork from that and I believe the board agreed to provide some funding towards that as match for them. Don't recall what that was, maybe 15,000? So that paperwork will be forthcoming from, uh, Little Conestoga people. Making aware that Black Knight Tavern, which had burned earlier, they have now submitted a, their first round of building permits, which is to install windows and put a new roof on so that it's watertight. Their next step then will be to finalize the design on the inside and then get the inside reconstructed. So that's moving forward, which is great. The admin finance group met tonight. Uh, we had, uh, quite a few discussions. But we discussed, uh, the golf equipment and carts. And the, the group is supporting, doing a loan from the township to fund these, um, purchases rather than getting leases outside and having to pay significant more interest money. So that whole program will come back to you for approval. We also, um, discussed the rec authority and having them take the next step to become autonomous to themselves so that they have more control and function as an authority, an operating authority. So we're going back to the rec, rec authority to discuss that with them. We discussed the fee schedule as we had mentioned before. The general feeling of the group is that there should be only minimal changes in a few areas. We're essentially simply wanna cover our costs as best we can. We're not looking to increase to make any kind of money. So that will be revised and sent back to the board for discussion. We had the wetlands discussion and the funding for that. We also discussed a healthcare plan to provide additional coverage for the employees that are over 65. We discovered that anybody over 65 cannot be participating in a health savings account. So there will be a third plan created that creates a health reimbursement account at the same cost that it is now costing you for the other two plans. So there's no cost to the township. In fact, the HRA funds need to be used within the year. If they're not, they return back to the township. So it's gonna be actually a less of a cost if the full deductible is not realized. And then we discussed the AARP money and we still need to get, gather some more information, um, regarding the reserve pumper and how we wanted to really handle the ARP money moving forward. I also forgot to mention our list that we did have a planning group meeting and that planning group meeting sole discussion was the special exception conditional use ordinance that you had discussed and approved tonight. Regarding the planning report, you've got copies of the signed ordinance amendment tonight. Shriver Pediatrics is coming in at 625 Community Way for a building expansion. That's going to the planning commission next week. The Yule Hall text amendment and will be on your board agenda on March the 2nd. The South Chickies, uh, project, which is a rezoning and a text amendment will be on your March 16th board agenda. I did include the building report, which, uh, Steve Bramwell provides to us. I read at least his, his information that he just sent me. And included in this report, I thought it was kind of interesting in terms of the level of, uh, permits that are being issued in the township. Uh, future projects, the Wendy's at State Road, we're still working through the engineer and the attorney regarding a draft and finalization of that submission. And we recently had a meeting, uh, with Sheets. They are contemplating a new store at the corner of Florrie Mill and Roarstown Road. So that's in the design stage. You'll probably be seeing that as a sketch plan at your next meeting, I would think, for waiver preliminary plan. That's my report unless there's questions.
And future projects. Marietta Avenue, 2, 2111. Did we receive a sketch plan from them?
Yes, the last meeting, I believe you approved it.
No, not that one.
No?
2111.
Twenty, 2532?
No.
No? The Cooper property?
No, not the, okay, that's, that is the Cooper property.
2111, yes. 2532, which is the Herman property?
I'm not sure who it is, but I think that's what, the, the one I'm referencing. I thought someone was coming in on that last week.
We did meet with the, the owner of that, um, it was very cursory. He didn't really submit anything or plan to submit something. He, he has some, um, that was the cluster development proposal that since we adopted the ordinance tonight, he does not qualify for that, so he's gonna have to really go back and regroup. The sketch plan that we did see was 12 duplex units. I believe one single, single access in with a cul-de-sac. But he really needs to go back and regroup, so it's really very early in the process.
I just wondered.
I do have a sketch if, if you're interested. I can share that with the board, but I think it will change significantly.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine. You got nothing official from them, really.
No, not even an intent to, to do something at this point.
Okay, sounds good.
I do need a very short executive session after the meeting. Very short. I did brief Tom already, so he's aware unless, Tom, you wanted to be part of that.
I would like to be part of it.
Okay. If you can just use the same Zoom link, we'll just connect you that way.
Same Zoom for this meeting?
For the six o'clock meeting.
Okay, we'll do that.
Yeah.
Anything else for the good of the order? And we'll adjourn. Done, we'll adjourn to executive session, 8:48 PM, and will not return, thank you.
Issue with Outlook appointments not showing up on my computer. There was a meeting set up that even though existed, because